From our July.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any polls say nay? Motion carries. All right, report from our mayor.
Actually, just a few things, so Councilman Robinson can get to the most important thing that's gonna happen tonight, right? So, I just want to remind everybody, the police department is hosting their back-to-school bash this Saturday. That will be at the Methodist Church. And that is the event that they host every year where folks can come, get ready to go back to school, receive some uniforms, backpacks, school supplies, certificates for haircuts, different things like that. So, always a great time and always well-received by the community and appreciate them continuing to do that. Also, I mean, Richard Johnson mentioned in the work session, but want to remind everybody, the pedestrian tunnel there for the Flying Creek Nature Preserve is under construction. So, want to be mindful if you're in that area just for traffic delays, you're not be able to access veterans' drive. And also, on scenic 98, there is some construction going on there by the county. So, that area is very congested, but please have your patience if you drive through there. And also, want to thank Public Works, Jamie Rollins and his staff, and also Justin, who is working at Flying Creek Nature Preserve for the beautification there at Noel Park. We talked about that, Justin came in and we talked about it, talked about starting to really work that management plan. They've been doing a great job with that perimeter and it really looks great and appreciate that. One more shout-out to the rec. department, we had a pool pump go down this week. They worked overtime getting that pump ready because we had a big swim meet this weekend. We also have another swim meet this weekend. Lot of folks there and really well-attended. And I know Pat and his staff worked really hard to get that ready and get the pool ready, so thank you to them, a shout-out. Just, you know, departments that never really received the appreciation, that we should show them because they touch so many lives here in Fairhope and just appreciate what they do. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you, thank you. All right. When were we gonna recognize?
Oh, we're gonna, I'll do it during my.
Okay, gotcha, very good, all right, very good. All right, public participation, agenda items, five is a public hearing, six through 25, I believe. Six through 25. Anybody, you have three minutes, come up, say your name, address. Any agenda items to speak on, on agenda items six through 25. All right, guys. Counsel comments?
Apparently, I need to yield my time to Councilman Robinson, so I'll do so.
I will go ahead and do the same.
I appreciate that, guys.
Yes, sir.
Not me, I'm a guy, I got something to say. Attaboy.
So, first, before I get to this group of gentlemen I got here, there's another group in Fairhope that did something big in the last week or so, and that is a group of 18-year-old Fairhope softball ladies won the All-American Youth Sports World Series in their own right. So, we want to celebrate those ladies for a job well-done. And at some point, we'd like to get their names, to be able to recognize them formally for their success. But I've now brought up, brought tonight, my 11-year-old All-Star team. Guys, if you'll come up to the front like you did last time, one at a time, just come on up, stand, gather in front here. The last time I brought these kids to you, they had just won the district championship, and they went on to the Alabama state championship and represented the city as Team Fairhope, and they won the state championship. And then they went on to the regional championship and represented our area as Team Alabama. And this past weekend, they successfully won the regional championship as Team Alabama. And now they go on to the 11-year-old Cal Ripken World Series as Team Southwest. So, this group has done incredible things. They're an incredible group of young men that I am very fortunate to get to coach. They've got two other great coaches out there, Colin Roof and Nick Hausman, and just a great group of parents with them that have been really supportive of us as we've done all this traveling and all this baseball during the summer. But job's not done yet. So, if you're watching tonight or here in person, this group is on the fundraising train right now. They've got raffles galore, and we are looking for any kind of sponsorship available because the Cal Ripken World Series is a 10-day, 10-night required stay in a hotel of Cal Ripken's choice in Florence. And so, that is not an easy thing for most families to do. But we are going above and beyond because these boys have earned every single bit of it, and we want to let them play out for all the things that they've earned. So, boys, congratulations to you, be proud of yourself. You have done a fantastic job representing the city of Fairhope, and we look forward to all the wonderful things you're gonna continue to do. So, congratulations.
All right.
Good job, boys.
Don't move.
Now, gonna see a lot more curveballs up there now, all right? We get in here? Okay. I want to stand, that was it, okay.
Smile.
Yeah, smile.
Be in the picture.
Unless you got your game face on. Yeah. That's right.
Oh, and before I forget, one of the things, in addition to the raffles that you can find, I shared on Facebook, there is a mixed pickleball tournament this Saturday at Quail Creek. Mixed-team tournament that all the proceeds will go to benefit this team, so.
Mix co-ed.
Co-ed, co-ed bracket.
Yep.
Thank you, boys. You are dismissed.
All right. Good job, guys.
Hey, Councilman Robinson, what site or what Facebook page can they go to to find us?
They're on multiple, yeah, so you can find them on my personal page, and then we are sharing them on multiple, what's happening in Fairhope, we're trying to get the word out. Hoping some of our local news outlets will come, check us out, give us the opportunity to get a little press as a local team going to the World Series.
And Councilman Robinson would be happy to share his videos, walk-off hits.
Hundred percent. Different hero every game.
Yeah. That's called a team, right there, boss.
You know, one of these kids may grow up to play for Fairhope High School. And I will say that the starting pitcher of the Alabama High School All-Star Game was Fairhope High School player. He pitched two innings of shutout baseball in the South's victory over the North this last week.
That's great.
All right.
Thank you, guys, that's all I've got.
All right, very good. Councilman Boone, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. I didn't want to leave you out.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Job well-done.
All right. Hunter, is this, who is this on the public hearing, is Hunter, right? Yeah, well, open, you wanna come in?
That's yours.
Someone, I wanna.
Kinda gets dry now. Thanks.
Welcome.
So, this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance proposed by staff, coming to you with a recommendation for the city council. It is a text amendment to the Medical Overlay District. No real surprise, this is stemmed from an addition at Thomas Hospital that had its own site plan review.
Can I interrupt you and just go ahead and introduce the ordinance, please?
Oh, yes, sir. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Councilman Burrell.
So, the Medical Overlay District, on the screen, I've got kind of the first paragraph of that that defines the intent and location of that. And Thomas Hospital, even when the Medical Overlay District was formed, was defined in that. It encompassed the area surrounding Thomas Hospital. There were some development standards established, dimensional, which setbacks and area, and so that's height, and setbacks mostly affecting this project, was based on B4 standards regardless of the underlying zoning. So, the red text, I'm gonna skip through this one. The red text is what staff proposed at the Planning Commission meeting. And the Planning Commission revised one sentence, stricken on this page in red, and revised to read in blue. And essentially, what this is doing is allowing the, any additions to the tower, doesn't meet any regulations we have today, but again, those buildings were built many years ago before our ordinance was read, reads the way it does today. So, it allows any expansions of those to meet the existing height and setbacks of those older buildings, but not parlay that into the other properties within the Medical Overlay District. So, this is a follow-up to the site plan review, and this is it on the screen. The vote did come unanimously for recommendation with that amendment from the Planning Commission, and staff still supports this one. So, I can flip back if you're still reading or have any questions on the language.
No, thank you. Want to open the public hearing? Open the public hearing. Anybody here to speak on this particular agenda item, this particular ordinance, please come up to the podium. You have three minutes, state your name and your address. Anybody? Okay. We will close the public hearing, and we'll let this one lay. Thank you, Hunter. Counsel, y'all have any questions or anything about this? Okay, all right, thank you, Hunter. All right. Agenda item number six is the final adoption, this is an ordinance to amend ordinance number 1599, code of ordinances to alter the schedule of fees for construction and building permits.
I'll move for final adoption.
So, when you, Councilman Burrell, we want to move for final adoption, and we need to state the effective date of September the 1st, if you could do that for me.
Yeah, I'll move for final adoption with the effective date of September 1, 2024.
Thank you, sir.
Second, yeah.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second. All right. Any further discussion? Okay, go ahead.
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, thank you. All right. Agenda item number seven is a resolution that the public improvements. Indic, huh?
I think this is the one you were.
Oh, I removed that one, okay, we removed that one, yes, sir, thank you. Number eight, agenda item number eight is a resolution that the public improvements indicated herein for Battle Stray subdivision Phase 8 are hereby accepted for public maintenance subjected to the bond posted and authority Mayor Sherri Sullivan to extend the maintenance and guarantee agreement between the city of Fairhope and the teachers' retirement system of Alabama. This is just a basic maintenance agreement, I believe they have two years, and after two years, we'll take over.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any polls say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number nine is a resolution that the Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract amendment for bid number 23030, consulting services for FEMA public assistance, management services, government services with Royal Engineering and Consultant LLC to comply with FEMA contract regulations, including and not to exceed annual contract amount of $500,000. All right, the accountant spoke about this, this is money.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution for the contract amendment.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? We discussed this in the work session, this is something that we're trying to get in order when, if, hopefully, we never have this situation, in God's name, but we'll be prepared if we do. All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any polls say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number 10 is a resolution that the Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract amendment for bid number 23031, consulting services for FEMA public assistance management services, utilities damage projects with Royal Engineers and Consultants LLC to comply with the FEMA contract regulations, including a not-to-exceed annual contract amount of $500,000.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any polls say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number 11 is a resolution that the city council approves the selection by the evaluation team for professional architectural services for RFQ for the city of Fairhope First Responder Hurricane Safe Room Project to Adam Stewart Architects, and hereby authorize Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate the not-to-exceed fee to be approved by council.
Motion to approve the selection and authorize the mayor to negotiate the not-to-exceed fee.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second, any further discussion, guys? We spoke about this one in the work session as well. All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any polls say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number 12 is a resolution to award bid number 2023WWF034 for the Working Waterfront and Green Space Project to Rollin Construction, Inc., with a bid proposal not to exceed $9,988,379.46. The contract has been approved by the U.S. Department of Treasury, ADCNR, and the city attorney pursuant to the resolution number 504524.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution toward the Working Waterfront project.
You have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I can't let this one go by without commenting on this. I mean, $10 million and a long, long, long road to get here, many years. And, you know, I'd have to thank many, many people, probably not the least of which would be Richard Johnson and Kim and, you know, our grant coordinators and writers and the mayor. And a lot of people to be thanked on this, it's been a long, long time coming. I do have one quick question, though, on this, just came to mind, is that, you know, the restaurant will be opening down there, hopefully, any day. Are they gonna still be allowed, are they gonna have parking down there while this is going on? Okay, I'm sure that question will come up.
Our plan is, we have to hold a pre-construction meeting, obviously, but the plan is to phase the components of this and to leave traffic flowing as much as we possibly can. So, we'll work with Blind Tiger and those folks and make sure they can still, you know, get some traffic down there.
I was gonna crack a joke in the work session with all this going on, that we at least leave one lane open to get in and out of the city, as with so much going on. I mean, I can't even leave my house right now.
Yeah, it's because Daphne's doing stuff, we're doing stuff.
Counties doing stuff.
Counties doing stuff. Yeah, and so, just.
Don't go to Montrose.
Come together.
Get out.
Right. All right, guys. We have a motion, Ms. Lisa, motion and a second, correct?
Yes, we do.
Did I vote?
No.
No, thank you. All right. Jack does it to me every time, yeah. I think he does it just to see. All right, here we go. All right, I have a motion and a second, there's no more further conversation, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any polls say nay? Motion carries. All right, thank you, Councilman Burrell. All right, moving forward, brothers and sisters. All right, agenda item number 13 is a resolution that the Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract amendment with Thompson Engineering, Inc., for RFQ request for qualification professional landscaping architectural services, planning, design, and construction-related services for the Flying Creek Nature Preserve project, formerly known as the Triangle property, to add construction material testing and inspection for an additional not-to-exceed cost of $14,820.23. Our city engineer spoke about this one, it's just something that is a standard, I believe, that we need to do.
So moved.
All right. I'm gonna second, but I am gonna have a question for Mr. Johnson.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Councilman Burrell.
Mr. Johnson, so, is this something that's poured in place? And so, why does the construction company, why can't we require them to provide test or core samples or? I understand the need for it, I don't disagree, but would they not bear the burden of the cost of proving that their materials are sufficient to? I'm picturing concrete poured in place, kind of what I'm picturing.
That is the majority of the testing, so the pedestrian bridge will be a cast-in placement, and they will form it up and pour structural concrete that's reinforced with rebar. And generally, no, you have a, you want somebody outside the contractor who's independent to do the actual testing. Because specification says, for example, 4,000 PSI concrete, if it doesn't break at the required amount, but let's say it breaks at 3750, the contract says that if it structurally will do, but we will pay you a reduced price for that because you did not meet the specification. So, it's, in this case, this is a structural element, we need to do it. And this will also cover the Greater Park project, such as the foundation for the bathrooms, the pavilions and things like that, other material testing.
Yes, so it's for the entire project?
Thank you.
Construction materials, got you, very good. All right, counsel, anybody else? All right. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any polls say nay? All right, motion carries. Agenda item number 14 is a resolution that the Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Christian Prouse Landscaping Architecture for the professional landscaping architecture services for an RFQ for the preliminary vision and budget for Bancroft Corner with a not-to-exceed amount of $12,500, and authorize the transfer of fiscal year '24 budget of $12,500 in to professional services account. I'm not reading those numbers.
So moved. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. This is, I think, Richard, Dr. Johnson spoke to us about this one, just to pass through. They transferring the monies because it was placed in the budget in another category, so that's why you see the transfers. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any polls say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number 15 is a resolution that the Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute change order number one for bid number 24024, North Ingleside Drainage Repair Improvement Project with a cost of $8,825, and to award change order number one to Blade Construction LLC. The new contract total will be $331,847.00. All right, this is a change order for Ingleside, guys, we spoke about this in the work session.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any polls say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number 16 is a resolution that the city council approves the selection by Mayor Sherri Sullivan for an on-call professional engineering services for an RFQ for the wastewater department annual contract to Duberry Engineering, Inc., and allow Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate the not-to-exceed fee to be approved by council. All right, guys.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any polls say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number 17 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of a Gorman Rupp TAA71SB self-priming pump for the wastewater treatment plant for Jim House and Associates as a sole-source distributor. The cost is $29,765 plus freight. This is maintenance and repairs with the water department, Darrell discussed this in the work session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All these were budgeted, by the way, great job, Darrell. All right, hearing none, any further discussion, guys? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any polls say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number 18 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of scraper blades, parts, and installation services for the Shreber or Schreiber South Clarifier at the wastewater treatment plant from Parks and as sole-source and manufacturer. The cost will not to exceed $35,123.00.
Move to approve the procurement.
All right, I have a motion, and a second, guys?
Second.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? This was actually under budget, and it was in the budgets. All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any polls say nay? Motion carries. All right, agenda item number 19 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of Flick Model SR4660. Anoxit, bless you, zone submersible mixer and Flick Model SR464 anaerobic zone mixer for the wastewater treatment plant from Jim House and Associates as a sole-source. The cost is $56,889.00 plus freight. It's another wastewater water treatment plant maintenance and repair.
Make a motion.
Don't fight each other.
Move to approve the procurement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any polls say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number 20 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of six pad-mounted transformers from Gresco for restore funded sewer upgrades for a not-to-exceed cost of $100,500.00. The transformers are exempt from formal bidding per Code of Alabama 1975, section 4116, 51B7. The cost will be included in the 2025 budget.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution?
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second, Mr. Patterson, our supervisor of electric, came up and spoke to us about this one. We did not budget, but we have it budgeted for the 2025 season, and our accountant said the money is there, so. All right, guys, any further discussion?
Yeah, Council President, I did, I talked to Mr. Patterson today about this, and I did ask him to keep looking forward such as this and look well out into the future because I think some of these are 35-week lead time. And I hear something about 90-something weeks.
Ninety-six.
Almost two years lead time on others, so we need to be looking three, four years out in advance. One storm could really put the hurt on us if we were to run short on transformers. And this is a, this is a national, this is actually a worldwide crisis, there are just so few builders of these, so. Appreciate that you calling, Ben, and talking about that, and just your team and mayor, if y'all look as far out as you can, I mean, we may be, you know, ordering transformers that we won't get until 2027.
Yeah, you know, I agree.
That was it.
Okay, counsel, anybody else? All right, very good, thank you, Councilman Burrell. All right. No further discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any polls say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number 21 is a resolution to award bid number 24050 to Serview Field Services, Inc., for natural gas distribution system leak detection survey for a not-to-exceed amount or annual contract amount of $85,000.00. Wes, this is standard testing to make sure that we're in the rules and regulations, so this is just normal procedure.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion, guys? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any polls say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number 22 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of installation of the National Fitness Campaign Fitness Court System by Nationwide Fixure Installation as a sole-source installer. The installation cost is not to exceed $25,000.00.
Move to approve the procurement of the installation at the Mike Ford Tennis Center.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I think we did the right thing. All right.
Amen.
Yes, sir. All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any polls say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number 23 is a resolution that the city.
We'll remove that, right?
Oh, yes, we're tabling that one, thank you, Councilman Burrell.
That was a question, table it, but I think you need.
Yeah, I think we need to remove it.
Seven as well, you can either remove it, if you do both, you have to just amend the agenda and remove seven and 23.
Oh, can't just table?
We table both of them, but we didn't do anything actually in the meeting here on number seven. We kind of, we talked about that before. I think you just need to.
Well, he removed it, right, so we can.
Yeah, we amended seven.
He removed it before the meeting started.
Before the meeting, so we did do that correctly. Yes, sir.
We didn't talk about 23 also?
We talked about it, and we were gonna decide to table it at this point.
I'll make a motion to table item 23 to the next, to the next meeting.
To the next meeting, yes, sir.
Second.
Is that okay, counselor?
To the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. Or, let me just say, to the next city council meeting.
Okay. Okay, no worries, yes, sir. All right, I have a, I have a motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Any further discussion? So, the reason, I'll go back, for those that are just tuning in, the reason that we're tabling is, we had a fairly decent. tabling is, we had a fairly decent discussion over this particular agenda item and we were trying to get it done for business sake, but we just had to kind of tighten it up a little bit, decided as a council to tighten it up, so to give our legal team a little bit more time to do those things, we decided to table it today, so that's what that was all about, guys, if you're just tuning in. Okay, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay, all right, motion carries. Agenda item number twenty-four is a resolution that the City Council of Fairhope approves the procurement of LED Christmas lights that are on the Omni Partners Cooperative Contract with Imperial Dade in network with network distribution and therefore does not have to be let out to bid. The total purchase amount is one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, six hundred dollars and zero cents.
So moved, second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, I gotta have the lights, very good. All right, all in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay, motion carries. All right, agenda item number twenty-five is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the three-year lease of the IX seven series mail machine on the Alabama statewide contract with Quodient, Inc., I guess, that therefore does not have to be let out for bid and to authorize Mayor Sheriff Sullivan to sign the lease agreement. The total amount is twenty-two thousand eighty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents for three years. Okay, all right, I think, I don't know if we talked about that, I think Jeff came up and spoke about this one in briefing, yes, he did.
I think it's budgeted, maybe slightly over budget.
Yeah, it's budgeted, no it-
Give me some mail machines and start leasing them.
Yeah, it's budgeted, we, we have seven thousand for this year, that's, the twenty-two is a collective of series of three years.
You gotta get some.
Yeah, so this year is budgeted, thank you, Jeff. All right, do we have a motion and a second, guys? We need a motion and a second, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Councilman Barrell, all right, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay, motion carries. All right, agenda item number twenty-six is public participation. You have three minutes, please come up, state your name, your address, for the good of the order. Good afternoon, sir.
My name is Chris Blackwood, I live on Gayfer Avenue and I'm here in support of Jennifer Blackwood's claim against the city that was mentioned last session. I am her ex-husband and the father of our beautiful twin girls. I have been a witness to the change of a confident, strong, and independent woman, that to fear and regret. I was a witness to the physical and emotional injuries sustained to her by Mr. McSherry. Along with one of my daughters, took her to a medical facility to seek medical attention from those. It took a lot of time for her to get the courage to open up to our daughters and family about what had happened to her, what she was going through and to move forward with filing charges, sorry. I was a witness to the investigation into the allegations against Mr. McSherry. While the lack of any investigation, one of McSherry's investigators found me and questioned me a week before the hearing, but nothing from the prosecution. I was present in the courtroom and was under the impression that case was going to be continued and moved to another venue, as Jennifer was told, but that did not happen. What I witnessed that night was a character bashing of Jennifer and not one ounce of prosecution. In the end, the judge said that obviously something had happened between both of them and he would throw McSherry in jail if there had been an ounce of prosecution, but he had no choice but to find him not guilty and that is a fact. I love this city. I feel a lot of pride in telling people where I live, but as a citizen, it is very eye-opening as to the lack of protection, investigation, and empathy for a victim of domestic violence, especially after she reported to everyone she was being surveyed, harassed, and intimidated. As a father of two young women, I am shocked and worried that the city would not do everything in their power to protect a woman's rights. How do you explain to young women that they may not be fully protected for speaking out? Mr. McSherry is not a victim. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, you can hear me, right?
Go ahead, young lady.
Okay.
You're okay.
Good. I'm Grace, Jennifer Blackwood's daughter, I attend Fairhope High School, I'm speaking on the behalf of myself and my sister. In two thousand seventeen, when we were nine, my mother and Ronan started a date. At that time, I was completely clueless about what would happen later in the relationship. As the relationship started to grow, Ronan began to buy us gifts, money, even take us on trips, when we thought he was in love with our mom. I found out in two thousand twenty-two that in two thousand eighteen, he hit my mother for the first time. I thought highly of Ronan and when I was oblivious to the horrors, he was putting my mother through behind closed doors. She would blame all of these nasty bruises on our dogs, falling, and even attacks on her in parking lots. I began to ask questions because a dog cannot do that, or even falling cannot make such nasty bruises. In two thousand twenty-two, my mother finally told us about the abuse. Me and my sister were both somewhat shocked, but not surprised he was doing this. My mother took Ronan to court and lost. There's no reason for her to lose, the only reason that happened was because Ronan blackmailed and paid people in the case or helping with the case to keep quiet, that was very lame. He only did that because he knew he would be in jail and lose his business. It's very sad to see my mom, over the time with Ronan, go from being a strong person to being destroyed. How low do you have to be to side with an abuser? People began to ask me why my mother never told anyone about what happened to her in two thousand eighteen until a good while later. This is because it is abuse, it's called abuse for a reason and not anything else. Everyone wants to know why most women never tell anyone soon. That's because when a man decides to hit a woman, that woman is scared for her life. Abuse is not a game and shouldn't be treated like one. Ronan started in two thousand twenty-two to take our dogs from our home and bring them to his house, so my mother would have to go over to get them. He would tell her where to park, right in front of his Ring Doorbell camera. I remember us being followed and my mom trying to distract us from what was really happening. Ronan was writing his story, my mom being crazy and obsessive. My mother was scared and it became obvious that she trusted no one to protect her. And not letting my mother show most of her proof in court seems pretty weird. And, you know, most of the time, people just don't care about stuff like this. I mean, why get into your job, work so hard to get into your job and not do it? And shame, it's a shame that people actually do this. It's shame that people decide to side with an abuser. Most people who sided with him had no other choice, blackmail with footage of them in Ronan's bar doing things that they might, may not want to be in public. That just shows how low Ronan and his ciders really can get. You are not crazy or abusive like Ronan, hopefully you're fully capable of having emotion and protecting future victims from horrible people like him.
Thank you for your set of talk. My name is Shree Montello, I am here joining you all tonight from Atlanta, Georgia. I am a childhood friend of Jennifer Blackwood, so I too am here in support of her. Jennifer and I have been friends going on thirty-six years, quite a long time. She and I have been through pretty much every phase of our life together. We have, we both overcame many obstacles in our childhood to become successful women. She in the field of pharmaceuticals, working for Pfizer, and I in the field of education for the University System of Georgia, specifically Kennesaw State, if any of you all are familiar with the metro Atlanta area. Beginning early twenty eighteen, I noticed that our regular communication began to become less frequent. My childhood friend was becoming somewhat of a stranger, not taking my calls, limiting the amount of contact that we had. Given that I live three hundred miles away with my husband and my three children, obviously I had very limited physical contact with her, in-person contact. Little did I know, the horror my dear friend was enduring. Unbeknownst to me, she was being domestically abused in this town. And sadly, I was not able to see this ongoing abuse, the wounds that were sustained from a gentleman putting his hands on her, Mr. Ronan McSherry, an individual that I previously thought actually cared for my dear friend, that claimed that he loved her when the relationship began. In two thousand twenty-two, Jennifer confided in me about all of the abuse. As you can imagine, I was horrified, not only as a woman, but as a woman who fought so hard, just as she did, to become successful in our lives. Jennifer confided in me that she was struggling because she wasn't sure how to handle this, as any woman would. Jennifer is an amazingly independent, monetarily self-sufficient, hardworking woman that was being abused by the individual in this town, which I later learned was not even a citizen of the United States, much less a citizen in this town of Fairhope. As I researched a little bit about Mr. Ronan McSherry, I was appalled at the information I discovered, even the City of Fairhope City Records had quite a lengthy report that I read on Mr. Ronan McSherry, not to mention an online video of him literally knocking another woman off of a bar stool. Gentlemen, it's quite an individual you've got living in this town. Not only is he residing in this town, he's conducting business in the small town of Fairhope, Alabama. Although I no longer live in lower Alabama, I'm deeply saddened to know that such an individual is walking the streets, residing in this town, and being allowed to conduct business. I cannot for the life of me understand how this is taking place. Good evening.
Hello, gentlemen.
Mayor.
Prosecutor. I'm Carrie DeBolder Edwards, I live on Gunnison Road in Fairhope, Alabama, and I am a domestic violence counselor with extensive training and experience. I've known Jennifer for at least ten years and I noticed her becoming, as her friend had said, less and less available for phone calls and for visits, refusing to go out to go grocery shopping after a point, wearing turtlenecks in the summertime, which she doesn't even do in the winter, only to see she was covering up bruises from strangulation marks by Mr. McSherry. That's when she finally told me the truth and between her family and friends, she did decide to go for an intensive thirty-day program for the domestic violence, the intimate partner violence specifically, and her PTSD, the flashbacks, the fear, the inability to leave the house, inability to sleep, nightmares, inability to carry on any kind of conversation about anything except for her abuse, trying to figure out how she was going to shield her daughters from this. I'm glad that she went to that program and it helped her tremendously. I'm very ashamed that Ms. Blackwood had to endure being revictimised by not being allowed to speak her piece, by being told that the venue was going to be changed, that's why I didn't come that day to be a witness, only to find out that she was told at the last minute, geez, I guess you're not prepared. And her ex-husband, Chris, was not allowed to even testify then. I have spent most of my life dedicated to helping children and families, I have treated and helped and supported male victims of domestic violence, but that is generally way less than five percent of all the victims. Even if someone comes forward and has the courage, there are three women or more a day, just in this country alone, that are killed by a partner or ex-partner of domestic violence. They are not listened to, they are not believed, I don't want to cry woe as we as women type thing, the whole we women thing, that's not where I'm coming from. What are our young men witnessing that are allowed, that are seeing what the older men are doing, what's happening to their mothers, their sisters, even their girlfriends maybe by somebody else, their daughters? What are these young men thinking? They're above the law, especially if you own a business, especially if you're told exactly, I have people in high places, higher than you will ever know, you will never be able to pull this off, you will be sorry if you do, I've been with her when she was followed, when we were being recorded, people sitting in vehicles in front of her home, her phone being tapped, and this is all okay according to the city? I feel much more hope for this city than that. In nineteen ninety-four, a federal law was passed to protect women from this type of thing, and it's been also reiterated since then and I hope our city can do better. Grants are available, thank you.
Thank you. Embodied?
Councilman, mayor, my name is Cornelius Woods and I live here in Fairhope at two-ten Silo Loop, and I'm here to see what we can do, for the city can do to help with the situation with the birds. We have ordinance about feeding geese, geese and everything like that, waterfowl in the city, but the city is getting bigger, it's growing, and we have a lot of development coming in and building homes and everything. These lots are very small, and what you have, you have some neighbors coming in from different parts of the world that come in with different, you know, hobbies and things like that. But one thing is, you know, we've been living here for almost eight years and we get neighbors coming in, some of them start slamming in a bunch of bird feeders. We've been enjoying our backyard, my kids, we had just finished painting our kids' playset. I got three girls and I'm painting it, they're happy, we ready for to enjoy the spring, ready to come up. The guy moving in, putting in bird feeders, create the whole bird sanctuary. Birds poop everywhere on my, my kids' stuff. Go talk to the neighbor, I'm not gonna stop doing what I'm doing, I don't care, really. It led me to do things to try to keep the birds off my kids' property, and then he cried, oh, he's harassing me with, with the birds of prey sound. See what I did, my kid got a playset and I put the, a device that makes the birds of prey sound, because the little wild birds that he feeds me don't like birds of prey, don't like the hawks, they don't like the owls. So I did a lot of video study and I see these birds coming in and I save my videos and I save my pictures of all the bird poop. It was literally hundreds of birds coming in there, they, they weren't coming in before, trust me, because my kids said, daddy, why we gotta keep cleaning our kids' playset, I mean, why do I keep, keep cleaning the playset up, bird poop on it all the time? I said, I just cleaned it not long ago, why I gotta, you know? So I'm like, okay, well, I get out there to clean it, but the thing is like, is that something that we can do privately for the private residents, not just the public, but now we got ordinance for dogs pooping in, you know, your yard and trespassing and stuff like that, so what can we do to help that out? Because we also have HOA and HOA be dysfunctional, they don't even do their job some, some of the time, they don't even do what they're supposed to be doing, and they, they retroactive like, they, they don't respond and they feel like you starting something of, something like that, then they go against you, and they finding you for something that somebody else is doing, and they bigging the law and the rules, but they can, but you can't. I mean, something that we can do, if, please, because, you know, this makes no sense that somebody can slap in twenty bird feeders in their- somebody can slap in twenty bird feeders in their backyard and have a whole flock of rats, because rats like bird feeders, squirrels like bird feeders, that's part of some of your problem that's going on around the city with these rats. They put these bird feeders out there, and they coming. So help someone, please.
So, Mr. Woods, so the problem, you're having a problem with birds. We don't have an ordinance for birds.
Not for the private resident, I mean, y'all have for the public, for the, you know, for the geese and stuff.
Yes.
What'd you say, Mayor?
But that's it, though.
We don't have anything, and I know other cities do have ordinances for residential areas that protect them from nuances or nuisances, like bird sanctuaries and things like that.
What I'm saying, I'm not saying that people could not do, feed birds, that ain't what I'm saying, okay? What I'm saying is, when it's starting to affect someone else enjoying their life in their backyard, and they didn't want the bird poop all over their stuff, bird care diseases as well, and this can affect your health and your safety and things like that. That's what I'm asking, because a lot of people moving in, and these yards are not probably naive from, from me to you, and you got five, six bird feeding, bird houses and everything right there, guess where they coming? They flying all over my stuff, everybody else's stuff. I just, you know, that's what I'm saying, I'm not trying to say, oh, don't feed no bird, no, move it. But some neighbors are unreasonable, and they take enforcement like some ordinance to say, hey, hey, guy, come on, man, you got to move your bird, move it to the front or something. You know, me coming to them, oh, get your F off, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, something that we can do so I won't have to be going to jail or something like that, because, I mean, you got my kids swinging their bird poop. As a father, especially I served in United States military and come back, I don't really play with you trying to do my family like that. I'm professional, I'm not threatening, but what I'm saying, it creates a problem that put me in a hard, rock in a hard place, and I'm at peace, and people tend to go over bow, and I just want something that, it's something, something can be done. I love Fairhope, I've been in Fairhope, I done volunteered on, cheated on the education system for three years. I did some things here in the city. I'm not just sitting here just complaining, I'm just, I've been part of the community.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Counselman Martin, I think you and I both have spoken with Mr. Woods.
I have.
And I suggested that he talk to his neighbor, which obviously he has, or maybe the HOA.
Yeah.
And I did do a little bit of research, probably not as extensive as I could have, on other ordinances in other locations, did not find anything that would, you know, serve this purpose about limiting the amount of bird feeders folks can have, that kind of stuff. If they're in public places, then it was different, but because it's on their own property, that's why I said it was probably a neighbor-to-neighbor, you know, situation, but, I mean, we can continue to look and see if we see anything, but I'm not sure that we will find anything that would help your situation in particular.
Well, I don't know that we can fix it by passing a law.
Yeah.
It sounds like a civil.
It is, that's why I said it's neighbor to neighbor.
So we had a, so we had an ordinance.
See the attorney shaking their head, yes, am I right?
So we had an ordinance that, and I told him to come because I wanted to talk about this, so if we had an ordinance that protected citizens for certain situations like that, and I have seen ordinance in other cities that have this same situation, believe it or not, which I couldn't imagine, but there are ordinances out there, so you're saying if we create an ordinance that didn't stop people from being, feeding birds, but made stipulations that they could not affect other people if they had bird feeding, you're saying that's still a civil? You can't, that wouldn't?
But how do you, how do you determine what the source of the birds are? I put a bird feeder in my yard, and there's a hundred birds that fly over, how do you originate, how do you determine that I originated the source of those birds? I mean, it's a wild bird, it's not a pet, it's not a domesticated animal, so it's hard to, to put a fine point on where those birds are coming from and why they're coming to a certain location.
Well, we got ten feeders in the yard.
Well, I mean.
I mean, that's logic, that's common law.
Well, I mean.
You know, common thought process.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to have a trial here.
Right.
Like we did earlier, but the, you know, and that one, you missed.
Well, I understand.
But, you know, if you create a situation, just, you know, you may have an argument that they've created a situation which is unsanitary and a nuisance, I'm just saying, that's just my personal opinion on that matter, is that, let's say you were feeding every stray cat, they don't belong to anybody, but if you had a thousand cats coming to your house, and they were pooping all over the sidewalk, and all over your yard and everywhere, it may be a situation where you could say, all right, you got to put a stop to this because you're creating a hazard for, a health hazard even for, for me.
No, that's exactly right.
That's my kind of advice to you even maybe, is that, I still think it's a civil matter, I don't think the city can initiate that, but I think if you wanted to, you could do that. Am I right? I'm looking at the attorney's, is that correct? Would that be the proper course of action?
So let me go further with, so, you know, you know, this guy served in the military, and, you know, he put, he got a guy with feeders all in, in the yard, and all these birds, and I understand the law you're speaking, but just a layman and a common man talking here, common sense, if a guy has a feeders on his yard, and so birds are coming in, birds are pooping, okay, it may not be that, but, so now I put up something to retract or disturb the birds, that's, 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 should be okay, okay? But in this man's situation, and as we know, the HOAs have no regulations, he served for our country, they're literally kicking him out of his house because he put that particular bird up there to distract or push the other birds away.
But the noise could be, you know, you got to be careful, because you don't want to become a nuisance, you know, first, you know, the violent noise ordinance, and then you don't want yourself to become a nuisance, because then he could say, that noise is a nuisance to me. I'm just saying, it's a, it's a civil matter.
You try one of those, you know, how you put an owl, you see people put an owl on the, on the post.
That's what he did. I got owls, then it moves his head automatically and stuff, and it slowed down a lot of birds, uh, trust me, hundreds of birds, it slowed down a bunch of it, he got a bunch of, not a lot of bird feeders kind of molding, but I keep eighty-five percent of the birds away, but I had to play the sound. Now, my sound is in the ordinance, because I have a decibel meter on my phone, so it's seventy-five decibel meter, so I made sure of that, but, you know what I'm saying, they starting to get people to, oh, go down there to hear the sound. But see, what happened, if you selective enforcing the rules of the HOA saying, okay, well, he can have that, he can do that to you, but then when I do something to keep them back, oh, no, you're not making the sounds, we don't like what you're doing, we're gonna find you, we're gonna not find him. Now, my stuff is in the court already, to be honest about it, but they, you know, trying to take my home and put us out on the streets for that, you know what I mean? My, you know, my kids, because the guy in the back being a a-hole, wanted to feed the birds, and they sit in the house, we got to play on the outside, my kid got to play on the outside, and we, I know exactly where the birds coming from, I understand what you're saying, Councilman Robinson, but I know exactly where the birds come from, I have video of that. So if someone can show proof of what the birds coming in and what they are doing, that should be enough proof to say, hey, guy, you are causing a nuisance on someone's property.
It is proof, but it's proof that you need for the civil matter, it's not something that we can.
We can't create an ordinance, is what they're saying. The ordinance wouldn't help in this situation, is what everybody, what I hear the legal and everybody else is saying. What do you know about?
Well, I, when I saw where some state, if you look it up, some states, it's beginning to starting to pick up. Some states have been putting in state laws and things about feeding birds, it had become a bigger issue. Since COVID came in, a lot of people stayed at home, and they started getting bored, and started doing this type of stuff, and it's starting to create a lot of nuisance. One of them was from, uh, uh, different places, but they, they had a bunch of pigeons coming in and pooping everywhere, but what I'm saying, there's a lot of rules are coming out, it ain't just the civil matter of it, but it's also about the city of, of making sure that the health and safety of another resident, not just the nuisance, but the safety, the health. So what's the health part of it?
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into it.
You know what I'm saying? That's what I'm saying. Are you keeping us safe, I mean, they're what we're supposed to be, right?
Yeah, we'll look into it. We'll look into it, Mr. Woods, I appreciate you coming, that's why I had you come, so I want you to talk to the whole council. God bless you, and thank you for your service. Thank you for your service, sir.
All right, anybody else? Public participation, you have three minutes, state your name. Hello, young man.
Uh, this, this is not an attack on anybody, this is no ill will.
State your name, sir.
Sorry, I'm Kenneth Ryan Hall, uh, live on County Road eleven. Uh, for about, I'm not talking about the last, like, for the last five years, but for about fifteen years to five years ago, uh, just going through a lot. And I brought this, start off with Ephesians six twelve, for we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against rulers of the darkness of this world, against spiritual wickedness, wickedness in high places, that God is not happy with us. The powerful and rich oppress the weak and poor, the informed stay silent while the ignorant suffer. Facts are, if you make a very wealthy, connected enemy, it can, uh, cause you pain for many, Yes, so much as, uh, things I've noticed in this world that the Lord gave me, like visions that I've seen in this life, is, uh, it showed me everything, and it's, there's, it's all unbiblical, and it's unconstitutional, so I don't know anywhere where it could stand. You can't stand with the Bible, you can't stand with the Constitution of the United States, where do you belong? And, uh, anyways, it says, traps are made and carried out, and affect, and they affect the entire families. And I'm not saying that any or all, well, I'm not saying that all of you or any of you are hurting anybody, and so, but silence supports and emboldens such actions. And choosing to stay silent, not being here to protect God's people, may very well, God may very well say to you, say that he does not recognize you when you see his face. That's just the message from the Lord, he wants us all to turn and repent. And also, any of y'all that know who I used to be, I'm terribly sorry about that man. Praise the Lord, he's dead. I hope y'all have a blessed night.
You too, brother. All right, yes, if you, yes, please. Hi.
How are y'all?
Doing well.
Good. My name is Allison Clark, I live at nine-five-eight-zero Cortez Avenue in Fairhope. I watch a lot of the city council meetings online, because I have kids. The last meeting was a little disturbing, especially some things that were said to you, so I want to apologize for that. I literally gasped when that came out, but during that, after listening to that, I sent an email to the pastors that I've heard speak. Part of what it said was, I've resided in Fairhope for the past thirteen years, along with my husband of twenty-three years and my three children. Several years ago, a relative began intensive therapy and confided to his therapist and eventually me, that he had been sexually abused as a child in Maryland. He pursued criminal cases against three of the offenders, two in the public school system, and a camp counselor at a Southern Baptist church camp, and one was convicted. It became clear throughout the investigation that there were other boys assaulted, and the adults in charge worked together to cover up the abuse, including destroying records. Neglect of this nature added to extreme physical and sexual abuse creates layers of trauma for adult survivors of childhood sexual abuse. Pedophiles look for children with chaotic, chaotic home lives, and most adults don't come forward until the age of fifty-two. So Maryland had passed Child Victims Act in early twenty-twenty-three, and my relative was able to file a suit. There are SB nineteen, which is in the Alabama Legislature, and I've repeatedly asked, I received no response from the pastor about this. I asked if I could come talk to him, I sent it to other pastors here in Fairhope who spoke at city council meetings, nothing. Talked to representatives, anybody I could talk to, nobody's interested in helping actual adult victims of child sexual abuse. So when the pastor stood up and ridiculed all of y'all and said that you were going to have a group of pedophiles come in next after having the pride meeting here, I just want to stand up and say that the Archdiocese of New Orleans has had a subpoena for child sex trafficking. I'll say that again, the New Orleans Archdiocese is being investigated for child sex trafficking. Southern Baptist Convention had over seven hundred child predators on a list that they knew were abusing people. There have been priests at the Catholic Church here, there have been parishioners at certain churches, there's preachers at other, I mean, I could go on, I can name names, I can show you court cases, I can show you all kinds of things. I can't find a single case of, at Bebobs, of a child being molested, or at a pride event of a child being molested, zero, there's none. But I can show you thousands of children that have been hurt in churches and other institutions. So if these people want to stand up here and ridicule you and ridicule a big part of our community, they need to look inside, they need to look where they stand. Maybe those people in power are trying to get them to blame the theys, all the theys, the gals, the gays, and the theys. That's who gets blamed all the time, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you copy what Senate bill that was?
Uh, Senate Bill nineteen from Senator Marika Coleman, or America Coleman, I don't know how to say it.
It's America, America. Anybody else, for the good of the order? Okay, can I do that? Anybody?
Move to it, Joe. A second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.